Okay. Welcome, welcome everybody to our monthly town hall meeting. It's always held on the last Sunday of the month. And we are at today on the last Sunday of August. And I'm looking forward to an engaging conversation on various topics. Thank you all for RSVPing and joining us today. And many of you have sent in your questions and I really appreciate you taking the time to not only attend, but to also share some of your views. Many of you took the survey and provided some insights in terms of what you are thinking, which is very, very important to me. And I truly, truly appreciate that. And, and also as part of the RSVP, we have received a few questions. And we'll sort of run through it. And my objective is to not only make it educational for myself with the conversation that we have today, but to also allow you a chance to, to hear from me. And I, I try to be as candid as possible. There's no dancing around for me because I'm not a career politician. And I don't believe in that. I believe I'm a straight shooter. And so we'll get to some of these issues. I believe Afghanistan is certainly top on people's minds based on the emails that we have received so far. And so why don't we get started? And you know, some of you I can see who are joining for the very first time. A quick intro of myself. Actually, you know what we'll do is I'll send you a few links as we go along. And so if you are, this will go on Zoom chat. So I just sent a link which is, which is a, which is a very short introduction of myself. I work in the high tech. And currently a council member in the city of Saratoga in my second term. And what, what I did as a council member was applying the tech framework of getting things done and trying to find innovative approaches to problem solving. And it was, it was a good story that played out. This is my seventh year on the city council. And the very first year we ran, the very first time we ran in 2014, we barely scraped through by 71 votes. It was nail biting. And, and then a few years later, four years later, we were re-elected, re-elected with the most votes in 64 years of Saratoga. And I couldn't tell what happened that night, election night of 2018. But, but what I had done was, I was keenly interested to solve problems. And, and we took on some big challenges in the city of Saratoga. We dropped burglaries, we took on a very powerful water utility company. And the people apparently liked what we were doing. And this run for Congress is basically, we are seeking to bring some tech savvy skills to Congress and getting things done approach. Because what I see is we have a broken political system. And we see a lot of partisan politics that is a very easy game to play in Washington. And our politicians are very, very good at that. And, but I don't believe in that game. You know, my approach to political service is about problem solving. And that's the only agenda I have. And that's the reason why we believe that we can make a huge difference when it comes to serving America as a congressman from Silicon Valley. And Silicon Valley is the 19th largest economy of the world. And we, we need some tech skills. Because whatever has happened here in the valley has happened because we have the best of brains and best of minds who flock here from every part of the world and the United States. But what, what would, what would happen if we were keenly interested to grow the innovation economy? So we have some great ideas in that. And I invite you to look at rishikumar.com/tech, which is, we have written a policy paper. And there are quite a few components of that in terms of what we would like to seek to do as a congressional leader from Silicon Valley. But that is a keen aspiration that we have to, to fix some of the big challenges. Right now, the tech exodus is a big one. People are leaving Silicon Valley and people have expressed concerns when we are going door to door that Rishi, you know, if jobs leave, if people leave, the revenue stream is leaving, then what is the future of us, of all of us here? And that is definitely a source of concern for me. But you know, when you look at Detroit, it moved from, from an amazing manufacturing capital of the world. And, and then Detroit in the eighties was not a very, very pleasant thing. So we don't want Silicon Valley to get there. And so that's one of the challenges that we are seeking to address. But also with respect to like California fires or the infrastructure that is needed here in California to fix the, the housing, traffic homelessness, we have big challenges coming up. And that's why with Congressman Xiu, we respect her 30 years of service in Congress. But we believe we have some unique insights in terms of problems we seek to solve. And, and what we, the, the leadership, the energy that we seek to bring to Congress. And my agenda is broken up into three parts, state, local and, and federal. And people tell me that, you know, there are local challenges that a congressional member doesn't have to ever touch. And I believe that any problem that affects people is my problem. Because we have to, we have to take charge, we have to address them because this is what people want. And you know, this is what has driven my behavior on the city council. And I've tried to focus 80% of my energy on the top two or three challenge. Because you can do it all plus, you know, having a full-time job on the city council. It's a tight balancing act plus the demands of the family. So what I have done is focused very heavily on some challenges. And that's the only way to get things done. And that's, that's going to be a similar framework of what we'll do in Washington as well. So that's to, that's provides you, I, I see folks are still coming in. Thank you all for joining in. And we'll get started with some questions and, and, and please make it interactive. I can see there are some questions that are already coming, that, that are coming over to us, directed to us. So, okay, yes, so why don't we get started? And the infrastructure bill is, has been a question that we have received very often on. And thank you, Bill, for your question. We'll get to that. I do want to answer Bob. He sent a question on Afghanistan and, and basically, so this, this actually came through the RSVP. And you know, essentially what Bob is saying is that when I talked about Afghanistan, I'd called it as very embarrassing. And it was a debacle playing out that the rest of the world was witnessing. Especially with how, how people were trying to board an aircraft as if it was a train or a bus. And that, that was, that didn't look very good. And Bob is asking a very simple questions, you know, what, what would you do differently? And so firstly, I would like to say that, Bob, I'm, I'm totally against American wars. And if you search on my website for war, and this is my website, I just sent out a link. So you will find, and if you search for war, you will find a policy paper which says that Rishi Kumar, Rishi Kumar will fight for peace. And, and that's what I see as, as a big challenge. Because you know, this war, we spent almost 20 years and they call Afghanistan the graveyard of empires. And, and that is a reason why, because there are so many, so many countries that have gone to Afghanistan and perished. And obviously, we began our, our efforts in Afghanistan. And the intention was good because we were trying to deny al-Qaeda sanctuary. And, but we have stayed there for 20 years and I failed to understand why. And there was a major scope creep, Bob. We had over 120,000 US troops that were deployed and there were thousands who died. And what I believe in is to be patriotic to America is to basically call out the issues and to not turn a blind eye. Because if I do that, and if everyone does that, then our problems fester. And then we have huge challenges on hand. That will be difficult to fix. If you start talking about it, if we come together to address them, then that is a better way for us to move forward. And not so much about pointing fingers, but just trying to assess the challenges and coming up with solutions. So obviously, our American troops have put themselves in harm's way with evacuating people. And I do want to call out the courage and my prayers to those who perished. 13 American servicemen who, who unfortunately are martyrs now in the line of duty, trying to protect people, trying to help folks to get out of Afghanistan. And I truly appreciate the courage. And I pray for the well-being of the families who will, who will be struggling for answers. And I've seen some news articles on that. It's very, very unfortunate. And, but the story is that since 2001, we have had almost 2,500 Americans who have, who have died, who have been killed in the line of duty. And almost 1,000 allied troops that have also died. And the, the Afghani troops, almost like 66,000 and 48,000 civilians. That's a lot of people who died, a lot of people. And it seems to me that America has not been able to leave the country better, in a better shape. Then our intentions are pure, even with Vietnam, for example. It almost seems like it's a Vietnam 2.0 playing out. You know, our intentions are good, but the end result, the end outcome is, is not that great. And so lately, the drum has been beating very hard with the US military industrial complex. And you know, essentially, the regime change wars is what I have been sent in emails that we spend a lot of money in, in these regime change wars. And that is not very productive. We were spending a total of $42 billion in Afghanistan every year. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money that could be used for, for certain purposes, for, for tremendous amount of benefit to every American here in the country. And when you look at the outcome of 20 years in Afghanistan and seemingly, seemingly Taliban came back as a huge force in Afghanistan and the rest of the world is sort of now trying to talk to them because they are trying to have a seat on the table with whatever else that needs to happen in Afghanistan. You know, it seems like we spent a lot of time and money for a fruitless effort. And not to mention the American deaths that these Americans will forever, ever be missed, not only by all of us, but also their friends' families. And sometimes a little child left behind. And one of our servicemen, he was expecting his very first child. And I just cringe to think about how this child will grow up and have to, having to deal a life without a father. It is, it is very, very tragic. And so we should have pulled out from Afghanistan a long time ago. And, and what I also don't like is the spinning, you call it pivoting or, or the deflection. When we talk about the fact that we left, what is it, like billions of dollars? I think 75 or 85 billion dollars worth of arms and ammunition behind. And you know, what I also heard was that, that the Taliban, many of them had joined the Afghan army and they got trained. And some of these things that we left behind, perhaps it may be difficult to actually use them. But if they have the training, then it could be used to point and create destruction in different parts of the world. And that really worries me. And you know, I, I don't know how, in what shape or form we can justify leaving all that money. And then when I look at what, what would I have done differently? Bob is to have a playbook, you know, every, every, every time we try to do something, you know, for example, fighting burglaries or, or fighting a San Jose water company, you try to have a playbook in terms of what you want to do, what is the desired outcome? And what are the different steps? And sometimes you work backwards to figure out what it is. And obviously, it may not be a perfect playbook, but you're constantly going to tweak the model as things evolve, which is what we should have, which, which is probably what we were doing. And, but you know, my playbook would have been very simple. The playbook would be to, once we exit, so let's focus on the exit. The exit strategy, as they call it in Silicon Valley. It would be to first evacuate Americans, evacuate our allies. That includes Afghanistan folks who were collaborating with us and working with us. Put together a plan. And perhaps we should not have vacated the Bagram airbase. Apparently, in fact, this was the topic of discussion last meeting. If you watched the town hall meeting from last month, somebody had asked that question. And you know, we left Bagram overnight without informing our Afghanistan counterparts. And now if we had that airfield that perhaps would have been put to use for evacuations. Now, what I heard was, we really wanted to make use of a single airfield because it's a lot easier. But you imagine an airfield which is surrounded by, by a very urban community where, you know, people are going to be using it to get in and out or get out. And it becomes like a point of failure for Americans. And there is a huge amount of risk involved compared to Bagram airbase, which could be, be, could be cordoned off, you could create a tight perimeter. And you could control that in comparison to having to rely upon the Taliban to, to get into the airport. So anyway, I mean, it's very easy to play Monday morning quarterback, which is what all of America is doing. But obviously, the sense of outrage has been building because you could have done this a lot differently. I mean, we didn't want Vietnam to play out again, but to some extent it did. And, and then when we see the amount of money that we spend, you know, $2 trillion, you know, the, the, one of the things that I would like to do, Congress should be asking for an audit in terms of where this money was spent, who used it? You know, is there a trail for it? You know, are we just handing out cash? And is there any accountability? You know, what, how is this money going to be used? $2 trillion is a lot of money. And those are types of questions that we should be talking about. And the, the end conclusion is, I think it's very hard for America to democratize the world in 20 years or 10 years or 100 years. And the, and Afghanistan is called the graveyard of empires because it's very, very hard, very difficult. And if we, our intentions are pure, but it never turns out to be, to be what we want it to be. The outcome is never, never. And, and so we need to get away from nation building. It has been a failure. Our, our military is called the Defense Department. Let's use it for defense purposes. And I've been talking about it for many, many years now. We should be talking about the bio-warfare, bioterrorism, cyberterrorism. We should be looking at ransomware. These are the threats that America is facing. And we need to fix those instead of, you know, spending so much money and time, efforts in, in trying to be in different parts of the world with not a very good tangible outcome. And then finally, I think I said that in the email that, that was sent out yesterday on this topic. In America, we as Americans need to watch out because everybody wants to leave Afghanistan seemingly. And so do we want America to become like that? We need to make some good choices here. We need to protect our democracy. We need to make sure that we preserve the integrity of a democracy by picking the right type of leaders. If we pick the wrong type of leaders, the big money in politics is a huge issue. So I meet so many people at the door. And, and I have conversations with them lately because that's what I've been doing every evening, meeting with neighbors at their doors, having conversations about politics. And I can see that some, seemingly so many are disconnected. I did not have the time to do research, to look into who I should vote for. And I just ended up picking one, a couple items on the ballot that I felt comfortable with. And this is where democracy can be compromised, you know? We need to, we need to fiercely protect it because if, if, if our economy is in shambles due to the choices that our elected leaders are making, if they are selling out, if they are selling out a country, if they're not willing to protect us, American citizens, then that is not going to be a good experience for any of us. So we should take it very seriously based upon what we have observed in Afghanistan. So I'm, I'm so sorry about a rather long-winded response to this. But, but this is a very, very complex problem as you can clearly tell. Okay, so, so let's go to the infrastructure question now. okay. Yes, I see May, May saying that no excuse for a complete execution failure. I believe it is a failure, no matter how you see this, it's a failure. And how can we avoid further damage? And that's the question that May is asking. And you know, we, we are not the experts, you know? We are sort of looking at, we are reading information that is coming to us from both sides of the spectrum. I call it the left, on the left and the right. And I try to read both because it's about educating myself to read it from, to see the viewpoint from every perspective, because that is very important to me, to try to come up with pragmatic choices. And avoiding further damage. I think we have to really look into, into our souls as Americans. And this is what America needs to do. We need to figure out a game plan going forward because this, obviously what happened did not work out. And we have to conduct a root cause analysis, drill to dissect how that money was spent. And all these are the different components of what we need, what we, what we should be doing. And yes, we have to defend our democracy. May is saying that you should call for an investigation. And you know, I'm, I'm a council member. And I believe a lot of these things will happen from Washington. And may I, I, I respect your viewpoints. Please do send in your feedback to your elected leaders, to the US senators, to your congressman. And which means all, all the congressmen from California. And congressmen, congresswomen from California, letting them know your viewpoint. And it's important to express our take on this. And obviously, you know, I will continue to do my bit to express. I, I believe that, you know, to, to shirk away from the problems and to not address them openly, we are not doing any favors to anyone by doing that, you know? In fact, this will compromise the, our, the, the future of every American. And that's why, as a Democrat, I've been calling out these issues. And I believe they are important to address and to discuss. And I've been called that, okay, Rishi, you should not be doing this. And, or, or sometimes you are playing to the, to the right wing and that's not true. You know, I don't pander to anybody. And this is what I've been doing for many, many years. You know, I call out the issues and then try to figure out, you know, what does it take to find solutions? Which is exactly what I've done in the city of Saratoga. I've challenged the system, tried to make it better. And the people, people really appreciated that. Okay, and then I see the, the question from, on the infrastructure from Bill. And so, so the infrastructure is, is, is a, is a tough one. Because when you look at the current state of affairs in America, we obviously need the investment. And $550 billion are going to transportation, broadband and utilities. And what I don't like about this is the fact that there should be no perks. You know, we should not spend it on frivolous purposes, you know? We should spend it. The thing is, when trillions of dollars have been spent, it's very easy to try to aspire for motherhood and apple pie. And I, I think we have to really be focused in terms of, you know, what are the areas of opportunities? And what needs fixing? So the, the passing of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act in the Senate will likely add almost 2 million jobs to our economy. And whenever I see wastage happening with these types of investments, I will call it out for sure. So the plan is to build like transportation projects, make, make our streets safer. You know, our bridges are deteriorating. Our, our investment with infrastructure has lagged over the last few decades. And it's time to get, get back to that. Because if you look at China or other countries, they are investing heavily even in things like broadband. And the very foundation of education, the foundation of economic success actually hinges upon broadband now, you know? Because, you know, the economy is sort of, is contingent upon the success of rolling out internet for every school-going child, for example, right? And we were clearly exposed during the pandemic. So we need to, we need to develop the digital equity is what some people call that. You make sure that every part of the United States has access to broadband. Cybersecurity is a big problem. We should expand our border infrastructure, water infrastructure projects. We clearly see the challenge on hand in California. The drought seemingly comes back every few years and we don't have any problem, don't have any solutions except, let's conserve, conserve, conserve. And then with San Jose water company, many of you might know that we are dealing with surcharges that comes back. It hasn't happened yet. It may happen next month is, is because the Valley Water, the Santa Clara Valley Water District, our water agency is now mandating a 15% reduction. And so with that, that is pretty much a cue for surcharges. And unfortunately, you know, this, do we want to keep dealing with this every few years? Or do we need to come up with the infrastructure plan? Wildfire mitigation, you know, that's a huge problem. Last year, we were observing what happened. Flood prevention, watershed prevention, you know, grid resilience, for example, right? Even with PG&E, we are clearly exposed. So if you look back, you know, we invested with the Erie Canal, the, the transcontinental railroad, the New Deal and the highway system. So this, this needs, this needs the next version of our investment. And at the same time, we should avoid increasing the, the federal deficit. And that is based on my read, the, the additional spend is seeking to avoid increasing the federal deficit. Because 50% of this will be based upon new revenues that are coming our way. And the cost of not doing anything is going to be, is going to be huge. Because the American Society of Civil Engineers has estimated, you know, the, the deteriorating infrastructure, the impact on supply chain is going to be huge. A loss of $10 trillion in GDP, GDP is possible, maybe possible if, may, maybe the outcome, if we don't make this investment. And we have fallen behind other countries, like I said. And we are spending roughly a quarter, a company, a country like China, when what they are spending annually. So we have to do some catch-up here. And obviously, we need this in Silicon Valley because there are people who are leaving Silicon Valley. Companies are leaving Silicon Valley and the billionaires are leaving Silicon Valley. And that's, that's a huge challenge on hand. So hopefully, that addresses the question on the, on the infrastructure. Okay, let's see. Okay, so while we, I'm reviewing some of the questions and let's, let's get back to, to, let's keep going. So Peter has a question about, about Senate Bill nine and 10. And the question is, are they likely to pass? And, and my stance with respect to these two bills? So Senate Bill nine and 10, they actually passed the assembly recently. So this was in the news last week. What are these bills? These bills, in Senate Bill nine, seeking to approve single-family homes in California. If this bill is signed by Governor Newsom in a, in a week or two weeks perhaps, I don't know what the timeline is, the plan is for it to go to the Senate, go, go, go through a vote in the Senate and then it lands at the desk of Governor Newsom for signature. And then it becomes law. And Senate Bill nine will basically split any single-family lot into two. And with the ADUs and JDUs, you could potentially have six families living on a lot of today. So a city of today would grow in population by times six in the, in the future, not, it won't happen this year, obviously. But these bills are going to stress our systems out. Because I've been talking about a need for, for urban planning. We need to, we need a plan for water, for schools, for roads, for traffic. And this is how urban communities evolve because they go through a planning process. If we push this housing without much thought with respect to these other areas, this will cause a lot of issues and, and which will lead to And and which will lead to, in fact, I met the people at the doors. And what they have said is, look, I'm planning to leave, I'm planning to leave California because this is becoming too difficult for me. And folks have lived here for thirty forty years and they don't want to see their neighborhoods uprooted. And Senate Bill ten, it basically takes some of these. Measures passed by by cities. And those measures will no 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 longer be in place, for example, for land use changes. We need a vote by the people. Now such type of types of measures, and I know there is a measure like this in Saratoga and many other communities. These measures will no no longer be valid. And and then the city council could do what they would like. And which would mean apartments popping up and and just like. Free flow development happening in in every city. And and that's that's a huge concern for me. So so obviously, I'm not in favor of SB nine and SB ten. And you know, in fact, I've been leading charge, in fact, there is a website, there's a. Page that we have established for this purpose. And here is the link I'm sending out, rishikumar.com slash managed growth. Please feel free to click on that link, it'll take you to a page. And we have some good information in there, and there is also an op ed piece that was. Published recently on this particular topic and what I felt about it. So so anyway. My my take on this is probably this will become law. At some point this year. And then, but we are not going to give up, we'll we'll start communicating with our state senators. Asking them not to vote on this. And then eventually, I guess, we'll also be trying to go coax Governor Gavin Newsom to not sign this into law. So but you know, we haven't, we have been pushing back for many weeks, many months now. But it seems like it is moving forward. And it's it's not very encouraging for us right now. So Peter, hopefully that answered your question. Okay. Okay, so let's go to the next question. So Debbie's question is very similar to this one. I've lived in Las Casas for forty years, I live in the North Forty area of Las Casas. And I'm I'm totally aghast at the size of the development. Is this the future? So apparently, in fact, I met with neighbors right in that neighborhood Debbie. And I've had many conversations and. It it's like people are are extremely concerned with the size and scope of the project. So I did end up visiting the the area. And it is huge, it's packed, you know, there is. The apparently there were walnut orchards there. They're for a rooted to make way for for this housing office retail project. And it looks very new and, you know, it's like some some, in fact, I I actually went and checked. The the price of homes they are selling because we talk about the need for housing because we need affordable housing, right? So I was out there checking the price of homes on on a website. Some some website that I I just did my Google search. And I found that the homes were selling. Homes were selling for about one point six million dollars, that was probably the starting price. And so I I don't think so, this project is creating affordable housing. Maybe it does, maybe, but but at least from what I saw, it seems like homes are going to be super expensive. And so what I feel about this Debbie is that. This is a bonanza for developers, you know, but to have bills like SB nine and SB ten. It's basically allowing them the opportunity to build housing. And mostly they they're not going to build it in Stockton, Modesto, Fresno. And they're going to build a bill right here in Silicon Valley or in Los Angeles. In Southern California. And it's all about basically the profitability, right? Because they, and I don't blame them for it, you're running a business. And you want to maximize your income from that investment, you know, it's it's it's. It's no, it's not a joke to actually be in the being the in the business of of development and. And it's it's very complex and so obviously they need to make an income. But these types of bills will make it a lot easier and we saw that. The whole thing play out at Walco Mall in Cupertino and and Keto Village here in Saratoga. So that's the unfortunate nature of what's going on. And this is going to obviously change the valley, you know, you're right, Debbie. Is this the future of the valley? I I can see that. There are major changes coming with these types of. Legislations and also with the Rena numbers, you know, we all, every city has to go through the housing element every eight years. And we are currently looking at, every city has been given a quota. And we are looking at that number, like number of housing units we need to build. And I know Saratoga has received, the quota is about seventeen hundred units. And I believe we haven't even been able to build seventeen hundred units in the last twenty years. And that's the number that has been given to us, so it's going to put a lot of pressure on us and. And 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 the thing is, you know, what I believe in is in action, is action, so that's exactly what I've been doing. Asking our citizens, asking our folks to to take their stands and express their voice. And that's all we can do in trying to engage our political leaders. And and if if it doesn't work out to what we are seeking. Then change will happen via the ballot, right? We all know how that works. So we'll just have to do our best to push back and then take action in case. It doesn't happen the way we anticipated to be. Okay, so. Let's see. Okay, so here is a question from Anne. Anne says that she's a Democrat and. And she's torn between between Representative Anna Schu and and Rishi Kumar. And apparently, she's been voting for Anna since nineteen ninety two. Or something like that. And so the question is about what are the key differences between you, both of you are Democrats? And what's what's some of the key differences? And you know, essentially, Anne. One is, one is the fact that we we reject all PAC money and special interest group money. And fifty percent of Anna's campaign money comes from from PACs and special interest groups. For example, she's the number one recipient of pharma money in the US Congress. Kevin McCarthy is number two. And this is from opensecrets.org, we can all look at that, this link is also on my website. But I would never do that, we are always rejecting PAC, special interest group money. As a council member, we rejected land developers and real estate developers would show up. And then when we take their money. We have to, we have no choice but to listen to them. And I like to keep my focus simply upon people. So I will never do that. People say, Rishi, you will change. In fact, just today, interestingly. Excuse me, we are launching a policy institute. For our high school students and the the policy director. She asked me a question like we had, we were prepping because the launch is later today at four PM. And and so when we finished our our prep call, she asked me, Rishi. I noticed that you don't take any PAC money, how will you survive in Washington? Won't you have to cave in and accept that money because it's very hard to survive? And what I say is that change happens in baby steps. If I do that and if someone else does that. Very soon we will have a movement. And the the PAC money, the special interest group money is a little bit old school, which is how politicians have conducted business. In the past, it doesn't mean that this should be a way for us moving forward. So I would never sell out to anybody, that's plain and simply stated what defines me. And and then when you look at. So you know, essentially, I like to be in front of the different challenges. You know, with respect to housing or traffic or homelessness. We have a policy that is on the website for each of these different areas. Now. Anna Schu, I respect her thirty years of service. She's been there for a long time and. And it's it's not very easy to be an elected leader. And you know, you have to, you have to strike a balance. In terms of what you seek to do, but my objective is to get things done. And I can clearly see that Congressman Schu, I'll give you an example, for example. The the big tech privacy issues that we have today monetization of our data. On the hands of big tech, Google and Facebook are right here in our district. And I've seen Congressman Schu on national television slamming big tech. And asking them very tough questions. But my approach would be slightly different. Because you know, I would like to be proactive, I would like to be sitting down with them. And talking about the the privacy of data, talking about the challenges. Talking about censorship and then anything else, trying to figure out solutions before before they become like major issues for America. And coming from the world of tech, we we have a good insight, in fact, I could see how. Facebook was sitting on on like. Peter bytes of data, you know, because you know. The number of subscribers is just just too many. And every every subscriber, every person who has a login ID password into Facebook. Has data, personal data that is sitting there, you know, their personal viewpoints. And that data could be monetized, in fact, it has been monetized by Facebook. And I would like to have proactive conversations, discussions. I call it being in front of the different challenges. And this is exactly my track record in the city of Saratoga. And I will be keenly interested, invested to fix these types of challenges. And that's the spirit that I seek to bring to Congress. I will not play partisan politics, you know, that's not my game plan at all. I will be bipartisan because that has worked out very well for me here in the city of Saratoga. And those are some key differences, you know, and. And the thing is, I'm not a career politician, I come from the world of tech. I I work for companies like IBM Cisco. And I'll be applying that tech framework of innovation of getting things done to fix some of these different challenges. Okay, so let's see, hopefully, hopefully that. That addresses Anne and your question and I would be very honored to have your support, so. Please do send me an email and I'll send my email. I'm gonna type it right here, it's rishi@rishikumar.com. If you have follow on questions, please do let me know. Because I would love to, I'm keenly interested to get your support. And there are lots of publications on a website, webpages that we have written up that compare and contrast. Congressman Schu and myself, and so please do take a look at that as well. I'll I'll give you a couple links for you, one is rishikumar.com/facts. The other one is rishikumar.com/ deceptive. So these are some webpages that we have written up to provide you better insight so that you can make your own. Choices. Okay. Okay, here is a question from Rob, Rob is basically talking about how the Federal Aviation Administration. Has declared that they will not change their flight paths over the area. And there are quite a few families that are actually. Feeling the brunt of air traffic noise and this was. You know, when I first announced my run, I met with many, many groups of citizens. Who came by to my campaign office to talk to me about air traffic noise. It is definitely a challenge, so my suggestion is search for. Air traffic noise on my website, there is a nice box. And please try to use that box, go to rishikumar.com and search for air traffic noise. And you will find a policy paper. We will do our best to see. For almost, I would say, six and a half years. You know, we have tried to find solutions and Congressman Schu. Has been leading that effort to find solutions. Unfortunately, it hasn't gone anywhere. And there has been no change, Federal Aviation Authority. Is is basically not making changes to the flight path. We have a policy now, there's not much I can do. Until we get to Congress, but I can promise you this. That we will take it up as a challenge, even if there are just five thousand, ten thousand families that are affected by it. You know, it is going to be very, very important to me to fix that. And I can promise you, I can assure you that we will take it up. In twenty twenty three, then we are in Congress. Unfortunately, the 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 rear view story is not very good. But but it's. It's rather unfortunate. Okay, so here is, it's more like a comment from Carl. So let me just read this, Rishi, I was pleasantly surprised to see you at my door. I don't have a question today, but I really appreciate your zeal in meeting with you. And for you so candidly expressing your views. It takes dedication, I know you work in Silicon Valley tech. And I wanted to express my deep thanks to you for showing up in to my neighborhood. I believe I got to know you personally and I believe. That I'm much more informed with the issues of this congressional race. And you know, I I truly enjoy these types of discussions, thank you, Carl. Thank you for joining our meeting and for for expressing these thoughts, I truly, truly appreciate that. It's these types of conversations. Which are. Me that are providing me to make to make it as a. As an elected leader to make it a success. Now, this is something that we have done in the city of Saratoga. I had gone to every door in the twenty eighteen, in twenty twenty fourteen during the first run. We actually knocked on thousands of doors and twenty eighteen, I said, let's go to every single door. And which nobody had ever tried in sixty four years of Saratoga. And we actually finished that and true story was when I first started this effort. You know, my wife, Seema, said it's going to be very difficult for you to to get that done and. But we we gave it a gave it a shot and interestingly. With all the help we got from volunteers who came from every part of Silicon Valley. To help our reelection win along with. So many from the city of Saratoga who believed and trusted in my run. We actually finished that two weeks in advance. So this is a daily daily drill for me and Carl, it was. It was very educational for me to have that conversation with you. But I've been doing this for many, many months now. For at least about three hours a day. And it's the most exciting part of my day and I really look forward to these conversations and. And if you would like to invite me to your neighborhood. I would be more than happy to see you there at your home. And then go meet with some of your neighbors, this is what I do daily and this is not going to stop. Okay. Okay, let's let's see. Joanne has a question and this is. Rep issues letters to the cable companies. She's, this is the topic she has. And Congressman Anna Schu and Congressman Jerry McNerney, both of California as the providers. Basically, AT&amp;T, Verizon, Roku, Amazon, Apple, Comcast, Charter. Dish, Cox, Altis, Alphabet and Hulu, wow, that's a lot of names. So they have asked these companies how they determine whether to carry a channel. And specifically Fox News. OANN, Newsmax. So Joanne is asking, Rishi, I want to hear your take for this, do you support their action? And and the short answer is no, I don't support that because the First Amendment is very important to me. I would like to hear from both sides of the spectrum. I want to hear, I want to keep the channels of communications open because. The messages can be very confusing, you know, and I'm against censorship. At the same time, the accuracy of message is very important. So you know, this is part of my tech agenda, part of my congressional agenda. Is to figure out, you know, what we can do to make the communication not only transparent. Open, but also to make sure that. We are not sending the wrong types of messages out. But in in no shape or form would I support what Congressman Anna Schu. And Jerry McNerney have done because my intention is to have open dialogue, allow every. Every side to express and this is what makes America special where we are able to hear disparate viewpoints. And come up with judgments, when I was on the Planning Commission, I would sometimes show up to a meeting. Biased with my viewpoint. But the moment I heard the other side, I learned to put my my feet into the other person's shoes. And 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 the decisions I would end up making. Were so much better compared to the initial perhaps bias that I'd walked into the city council meeting. were so much better compared to the initial perhaps bias that had walked into the city council meeting just by listening, listening to both sides. It's a very, very powerful game changer. And I invite all of us to to give that a try. It's it's very easy to to play partisan politics. But it's very, very difficult to try to understand. Now, we we have, they call it a cancel culture. We we just are are not unwilling to listen. And I can see even with the case of Afghanistan, how people are just unwilling to feel to see that one side has done any wrong. And we are not going to move forward in a constructive way when that happens. So anyway, Joanne, so that's my my quick take. So we are just about like six, seven minutes. Okay, let's take one more question and Okay, so Alan is basically saying that you're a business tech executive. I like the background, but my concern is, is a big leap from Saratoga City Council to Washington. Do you think you will survive in the swamp of Washington? How do you plan to survive? And so good question, Alan. So the thing is, I'm not a career politician. And I do not rely upon a source of income that will come from politics. And on the city council, they paid us a million dollars a month. No. I think it was hundred and fifty bucks a month, or maybe two fifty bucks a month or something. And that has never been my source of income. And what I believe in is problem solving. We'll get to Washington, we'll shake things up a little bit. We'll we'll question the system, we'll try to make it better, we'll fix some of the big challenges. And, you know, I'll give you an example, like when I was trying to fix burglaries in Saratoga, I was told by a former member of the city council that, Rishi, if you talk about burglaries, you will drop the real estate price of Saratoga homes. And when there's a problem, you have to do something about it. So the establishment of Saratoga loved me, probably not. Because I was constantly challenging the system, trying to make it better. And but at the end of the day, it's the it's the people who end up deciding whether the people, they are my boss, the people who end up casting their vote, I never forget that. And I'm there at their behest serving. So if I do the right thing, you know, I'll be in good shape. So that's one. Secondly, with San Jose Water Company, my colleagues on the city council said that, Rishi, we don't have jurisdiction over San Jose Water Company. So I I don't, what's the point of taking on a fight with San Jose Water Company? It's only PUC that has it. And what do I know? And when there's a problem, all I believe in is taking the first step. And we figured out innovative approaches to problem solving. For example, we rolled out a water app to make the protest a lot easier to PUC. You know, we did some, we explored lots of creative options. Long story short, we have rejected, reduced, suspended nine water rate increases by San Jose Water Company. Don't get me wrong here. I'm preaching conservation, native vegetation, all that stuff is there. But I do not like gouging by by private utility companies. My objective is to protect people. And then the water bill is like two thousand dollars for two months. That's a little too much. And the profits ballooning from from a baseline of twenty-two million dollars to fifty-two million dollars in a drought. And then the water company decides that, oh, we didn't hit our revenue threshold, so we want to increase the water rates that same year. That's not good. So, well, anyway, you know, my my intentions are pure. I want to serve, do the best. And so nothing is going to face me. We believe we will survive. We will rock and roll in Washington. And we'll get a lot of things done. Alan, thank you so much for asking the question. Okay, okay. So there was a question by Michelle on water infrastructure. We are running out of time. And if you go to my website, rishikumar.com/water, on on the very top of the page is the water infrastructure plan. And I'll be pushing for that because we, you know, Anderson Reservoir has been retrofitted. And we, it'll be out of commission for ten years. Well, it was discovered ten years ago. For twenty years, for twenty years, we have not been able to push this through. It'll finally be ready by twenty thirty or or somewhere around that. So we need a plan for water and we need to engage with this drought and see how we can address. I recently talked about in one of my emails how urban communities across the world, they grow in population. The population goes two X, three X, four X. And next thing you know, they do not have a source for water and they're bringing in water trucks. That is very unpleasant. Water trucks coming into neighborhood and filling a drums, filling up drums and it's it's not what we want here in in our in our neighborhoods. So we need a better plan and it's there on my website. So go, please take a look at that. And that brings us to the end of our town hall meeting. I really do appreciate you've been here. Oh. Yes, so airport plane noise. Helen has an update, which is, let me just put the link for all of you. It is, I just sent it the airnoise.io. Helen, thank you for sharing that link. Please do take a look at that link. And I really appreciate all of you sending in your questions in advance when you when you RSVP to the town hall meeting and for sending in your questions today. And hopefully, we answered them. This video is going to be on YouTube and will also be posted on social media. And please do, if you enjoyed hearing my viewpoints, please do spread the word. And I would like to ask campaign contributions because, like I said, we rely upon people, not the special interest group. So please go to rishikumar.com/contribute. The link is coming. And I would really appreciate you taking the time. And you can also send send us a check. Just send us an email. We'll send you the address. It's actually at the homepage of rishikumar.com. If you go all the way down, you will find an address, which is our campaign office. You can send us a check there. Or you can use your credit card at the rishikumar.com/contribute link. And finally, I'm already getting calls from my next call. And finally, this rishikumar.com/lawn sign. You know, we would love to put a lawn sign at your home, not today, but next year, just a few weeks before the election. The primary election is June seven, twenty twenty-two. And we'll just put it for a few weeks before the election. So if you can click on the lawn sign link I sent out and make a request, we will come out and put the lawn sign and we'll also pick it up and take it away. So I really appreciate you. Thank you so much for joining. I enjoyed the questions. Hopefully, you enjoyed the answers. And please do stay in touch. Don't be a stranger. And I'm happy to meet you at your neighborhood anytime. Just send us an email or call me. Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of the Sunday. I really, really appreciate you taking the time. Bye.